I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shaun, is that okay?
Perfect, thank you.
This session, the Lincoln County Commission on May the 17th, 2012, at 10:00 a.m. is now called to order. Members present, Moe Hued Clark, Charles McCann, President, Charles Nance, Commissioner, and Thomas Ramy Jr., Commissioner of the telephone. First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on April the 19th, 2012, at 10:00 a.m.
Second, I got Thomas. For God's sake, you're not being there.
That's fine.
Being all yes vote, motion carries. I'll be slow next time.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is Jamie Benson. He's not here, but they have, he's with the Lincoln County Youth Soccer. He has submitted a letter. I'll just go into a little bit of it. It says, "The purpose of this letter is to request funding to help with the development of the soccer field at the Lincoln County High School. The field will serve both the high school soccer program as well as the county youth soccer program. The main purpose of the youth program is to provide exercise and opportunities for youth to establish basic soccer skills. Youth soccer began in the summer of 2006 with eighty-nine children participating. Since then, we have grown to our most recent season with over three hundred and sixty players from ages of three and a half years old to fourteen years old. The Lincoln County Youth Soccer Board members were told at a commission meeting in June of 2010 that if Lincoln County Youth Soccer put down the mesh for gravel, the Lincoln County Commission will supply gravel and blacktop for the roads leading to the soccer field. This mesh has been down for two years now with no supply of gravel. Will the Lincoln County Commission still be willing to help with the gravel, blacktop situation? This has been a major complaint for the last two years that soccer gave. I've informed every parent with a complaint that we have begged for two years for help with the situation. With insurance fees, uniforms, trophies, et cetera, we simply do not have the funds to make these improvements. There's been widespread community enthusiasm about soccer in Lincoln County. Additional items are needed to complete the development of the field. We are seeking funds to meet the costs of the following items. Blacktop for the entrance, top of hill, and gravel for the main road around the playing field at Lincoln County High School. Storage building for supplies and concessions. We have begun construction. We need help to finish this project. Estimate cost for the improvements is $7,500. Lincoln County Youth Soccer takes pride in the fact that we are nonprofit and we keep youth soccer fees low and try to make soccer playing available for every Lincoln County child. We serve not only one area of Lincoln County, but the whole county. Without donations or financial support, these improvements cannot be obtained. Please contact us to discuss this request. Your consideration and support over the years is and has been greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Jamie Benson, President of Lincoln County Youth Soccer."
Wish they were here. I just can't remember all those details. I do applaud them and all those involved who have three hundred and sixty players and just the involvement of kids is super. We certainly, as a commission, have always supported all types of activities, academic as well as sports related. We will continue to do that, just a matter of how much and when, probably. But I'm also a strong believer that not only has the public currently done a lot of support, but it always like to challenge a lot of fellow school board people to step up and help. I didn't hear anything in there that they had done that, maybe they have, I hope. As I sit here and think a little bit, I know we helped them on the first start. I don't know if you remember, but it was a pretty good chunk of change, if I remember. But that's been a few years ago. And I know we told them we'd try to help them with the road down in there, but I couldn't remember the blacktop part and gravel. I know how to, I just can't remember. They show up, maybe all the time. I just can't remember that part. Do you?
I know two different times. One time we gave them five thousand dollars and another time we gave them thirty-five hundred dollars. I do remember that there was an issue that we, on the road, but I think that we told them to go to the Board of Education. As well as the softball and baseball team, they have to request them the same thing and we told them to go to the Board of Education, so.
Well, we normally said the thousand dollars, but I'd be willing to, so many kids involved and that kind of thing, almost three thousand dollars or something. How old people, I'm sure their hearts are in the right place if we discuss the money.
I'll motion that. Go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor for three thousand dollars. I need a comment.
Well, I, the going caller, I was gonna say, could you maybe ask also the Board to see if they can maybe map some of that?
Challenge them for that?
Yes.
Okay, you agree with that, Mr. Ramy?
How much exactly did they say they need in total?
Seven.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, two years. So I was saying three for the commission and hopefully the Board of Education would come to three and then whatever on the other fifteen hundred.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. That being all yes vote, motion carries. And send a letter to the soccer people and to the Board of Education in the form of what we have done and the challenge that we laid out.
And then we get a soccer parent in here. I'd say that soon we'll get the message.
Don't do that.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is Jack Browning with the Lincoln County Affairs and Festivals.
No Jacks here, so I'll hand it over to Jack.
I can get up between the seats.
You've been riding that tractor too much. I saw you for a long year there.
That's the one leg of people that have room for their legs. Can they already have one out of them?
Yes.
Just maybe I need one.
He should have one.
What we're asking for is for help on fireworks for July the 4th. They are getting ready to start the sewer line in the distribution line. So, but we are asking for them to help us with fireworks for July the 4th.
Very proud that you had last year.
Large. And we are working with the city trying to combine July 4th.
All right. I would like to see that.
Well, we're working on that very hard.
It's hard to beat two places.
Well, we want, we'd like for them to keep the parade, but continue all the other activities.
Lines club people have been made in favor of that. If we're not just visiting this issue for the town, I guess we just go, or we give you last year.
Wouldn't get anything else here.
Keep it, keep it simple.
We asked what we didn't receive.
Well, again.
If it did, it fell through the cracks.
Well, sometimes it does, sometimes the money gets tight just by the year. At this point, I think it'd be, seems like it, you know, it's a nonprofit, it's not a government agency, it's a nonprofit group, it's a good group, but I would offer a consideration of fifteen hundred dollars for fireworks for the fire dragon.
Okay, match it same as the city's two thousand?
Well, I didn't recommend it. And being that the city and nonprofit, it's two different entities, but most of them, but I'll take whatever the commission members recommend. Is there discussion by the members to go beyond the fifteen hundred or do I hear a motion for fifteen hundred?
I'll move to provide fifteen hundred.
Yeah, motion and second, fifteen hundred. Then you can go back and talk to us.
Thank you, sir.
All yes, motion carries. Thank you, Jack, for your work here.
Like I said, the leash bed is, is getting ready to start, Mr. Park, so obviously they'll do it in one. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is Jack Gutt.
Baron Burke, you want to introduce?
Pardon?
You want to kick us off?
I can't do that. We have Jeffrey Lusk and Jordan Cox here to give us an update on the proposed Ivy Branch Hatfield McCoy Trail. Last Friday, Mike Pinkerton, who's Marketing Director for Hatfield McCoy Trails, and Jeremy Cox, who's the Hatfield McCoy Ranger, met Commissioner McCann and myself and Preston and Gloria Brown back here, and we did a tour of the proposed Ivy Branch property. And according to Preston, we didn't cover but one ridge line out there. He says there's much more property to be seen. I think we had a good day. It's going to be a great trail system. And I think Preston would have liked to rode longer. I think Mr. McCann tired out on us. And so, we're really excited. We think this is going to be great for Lincoln County. I just feel that it's probably going to be a very, very, very nice trail when it's open, and I think it's going to be a big draw. And the thing about this trail where it's located, it's not only going to be good for Lincoln County, but I think it's going to be good for the tri-county area of Canoa, Boone, and Lincoln. So at this time, we'll ask Mr. Lusk to come up and brief us on it and answer questions. If you may have one.
Use the podium or you can stay where you're at, or associate?
Wherever you'd like me, Alex. It's okay. So my name is Jeffrey Lusk. I'm the Executive Director of the Hatfield McCoy Regional Recreation Authority. We are working on a trail system for Ivy Branch. I have with me Jordan Cox. Jordan's actually with the Ray Hall Transportation Institute. Jordan's role is, we contract with the Ray Hall Transportation Institute to actually map all of our trail scores to do the layout, and we also contract with them to oversee all the construction of our trail systems. So a great relationship and actually gives us access to not only folks like Jordan, but with planners, gives us access to professional engineers, environmental folks, which is more and more, especially with this little cold river system, the environmental part is something that, that's become something we've not encountered before. We're actually being held to a much higher standard with this trail system than we had once we constructed previously. The system is fully funded, so we don't need any money, we don't need any monetary contributions from the commission anywhere else. We've actually acquired all the necessary funds to build the trail system and to construct two park and ride areas, which will be our trailheads. Where we're at right now is the mapping is basically complete. We're putting together a final map, which will go to the property owners, say this is where the trail system will go. We have not submitted those final maps yet because we're still in the process of choosing two park and ride areas. Unlike our normal systems where we would build one fixed trailhead in which we would put bathrooms at, we're actually going to put two trailheads on this system. We're going to put one on the McCorkle end, one down on the Boone County end. These areas will just be gravel, parking lots where folks can stop, unload, go out onto the trail system. We opted to do that because we feel like that with that particular system, having one down on the southern end, one on the northern end would be better. That allows folks more development opportunities. One of the things that this system is going to encounter day one is we actually don't have any lodging infrastructure whatsoever in this area. This is, of all the trail systems we've built, this is probably the least developed. In other words, it's one of the most rural areas. But all, because of that, we have the most opportunity. Because of that, we have great opportunity. Folks that own the property the trail system's on, adjacent property owners, are going to have a tremendous opportunity to develop camping, campgrounds, cabins. Hopefully, at some point, we'll get some hotels here. Ferris mentioned that this is good for the whole tri-county area. We're actually going to the Canal County Commission, May 25th. We had initially planned on putting a four-by-four park in Canal County. We are pitching that. I don't know where that stands, but we think that this system is close enough to Canal County that this ought to be the primary four-by-four park. We're talking about the full-size vehicles for the Hatfield McCoy system. I think this will actually be probably the only one we develop. I think that it makes a lot of sense. That activity already goes on on the property. It's well laid out for it. We believe that we can put that there, and we think that they'll be as big as beneficiary as anyone from doing that. And I think this is probably the only piece of property we've ever encountered where you're close enough to the amenities that the full-size people want, where you're close enough to the downtown Charleston, you're close enough to places to go out at night, that it's even plausible. You couldn't go repeat this in a Gilbert or Logan or a Bible, but you could do it on this piece of property because of its proximity to Charleston. It just makes a lot of sense to do it here. They'll be a factor. In fact, as much as we hate to say it, initially, you're going to have a lot of your riders staying at Southridge. It's just, you're not going to, the day we open, that infrastructure's not going to be in place. Now, I think they'll migrate down. As you see cabins and campgrounds open, you're going to see those riders migrate because really the draw is to drive right out of your campsite, right on the trail. But that's everybody's preference. But day one, we're not going to have a lot of that infrastructure in place. What we're waiting on right now is the environmental to come back on the property. We finished our mapping two weeks, three weeks ago. We brought the State Division of Highways environmental folks down, and we spent an entire miserable rainy day riding around the property with them. I could not believe they insisted on going riding that day. Self, Jordan Cox, and John Fekety took them out, and we like to froze to death that day. I mean, it was cold and rainy, but they endured it and they gave us two thumbs up that day. Now, we will not get back their environmental assessment until July. They're doing all their field work on all their projects, and in July, they're doing the write-ups. In July, we expect to get back a positive environmental review that says, you do these things and you can build the system. And whatever they tell us to do, that's what we're going to do. Once we get that back, we'll be waiting on what's called a notice to proceed. The notice to proceed comes from the federal government down to the state, and it releases the money to build the system. As soon as we get the notice to proceed, we're starting on the system. This is the next system that will be built on the Hatfield McCoy Trail system. We are finishing up Mercer County. It opens up next Friday. This is the next system we will construct, and we'll just hold back our resources. We're not going to march forward with any other projects, waiting on this notice to proceed. That will release our money. We're looking at a hundred and eighty days to get everything built. Our goal would be to have this open either the latest part of this fall, if we can get the notice to proceed immediately, or right into next spring. But as soon as it's done, I don't care if it's January, as soon as it's done, we'll open it. We're not going to wait for a riding season as soon as it's done. Jordan's can give you some more of the specifics on what the process is once we get the notice to proceed. You know, it's himbling and laying it out, it's figuring out where all the signs are, numbering the trails, getting our crews up here. We'll move one or more of our crews. Right now, we have basically three dozers we operate, sometimes four. One or more of those crews will be permanent part up here. We'll actually house our guys somewhere in Lincoln County. We've already got a ranger for this system, Jeremy Collins. We do need to find him some housing down here somewhere. He's going to be a resident ranger. He will be onsite on the property, and Ferris is working with us, try to find him a place to live, but he'll be moving here to your county. You'll have a resident ranger onsite here. Eventually, you'll have a resident equipment operator here. All those folks, we just put them where the systems are, so.
What authority do you have?
Our rangers are trained at the West Virginia State Police Academy. They can write civil, criminal misdemeanors, felonies. They carry firearms. Last year, we rode-
Just on the trail, or any?
No, they actually have, they actually, they're a law enforcement officer. We restrict them by our code of state rules to our property and all the adjacent property owners. But if they were driving down the road and saw something going on, they actually have the authority to write all those citations to. Their authority most closely resembles that of a deputy sheriff. But they have a multi-county jurisdiction. They're not limited by county lines, so they have a multi-county jurisdiction. Actually, to some extent, statewide jurisdiction.
But not much of a D and R.
We don't write game laws, though. We don't write game penalties. We have, our guys will write all of our penalties plus all of the civil, criminal misdemeanors that are in state code. We do not write game laws. However, we do have game laws that we enforce on our property, so no name, not out there with firearms at night. Our guys do write those kind of tickets, but we don't, you know, some guys out there, I don't know, I try to think of a good example. We're not going to stop some fisherman and see if he's got his trout standing. I mean, that's, that's, that's the preview of the Department of Natural Resources. However, if you did have a firearm on our trail, we would write you a hunting citation.
I guess I was just trying to, rode the other day, and it is a, a big area, but if you've got a full-time person there, an enforcement officer-
He'll be there every day.
So it'd make, I guess, what I would say, like the whole community may be safer by having a person there.
Yeah.
You'll have more people, but you won't have-
He'll, he'll be there. I liken it to when a deputy moves into a town. A deputy moves into Ranger, West Virginia. Ranger, West Virginia, a little bit better place, because you know, you have a deputy that shows up and sleeps every night, but you're going to have the same thing out or near the system. I don't know where he'll end up living up there, but he'll live up at or near that system. And we go out and answer calls, you know, when they, if an officer needs assistance, our officers, we have the mutual aid agreements. Our officers are answering those other calls, and they're going out on mutual aid agreements. We have that with all of the departments that we work with. And you'll be pleased with the officer you got. He's a, he's a fine young man. He came, we got him out of the military, retired from the U.S. military, so he's just a well-trained guy. You're getting one of the best officers we have. And he's actually a sergeant in our system, so he's been in our system now almost five years, and he's actually moved up through ranks in our system. But that's the longest I've been with you that day.
Yeah.
But now, we'll tell you, we write most of our tickets, our non-resident folks don't get most of our tickets. Last year, we wrote a hundred and fourteen citations. We wrote seventy-eight of those hundred and fourteen citations to West Virginia residents, even though they only make up something around twelve percent of our total themselves. And that's, that's been true every year since I've been there. But we're marching forward on the system. Everything's funded. All we really now are waiting on is the Division of Highways to give us our notice to proceed. We have not made a final decision on the trailhead sites. I think we're on at least the southern one, the Julianian end down there. I think we've kind of picked where that'll go, and we need to get with the property owner there, which is Muller. The northern end, the McCorkle end, I think we've got some options up there, but we've not nailed down where that park and ride will be yet. I think we've got some, and we'll be, before we make a final decision, we're going to be back here with you. And you guys are, we always request that the County Commission sign off on those locations and approve them. What we don't want to put in is a place, and you guys look at it and say, boy, that was a terrible idea. Why did you put that there? So we'll actually be back with you guys as soon as we get nailed down. The McCorkle ones are one of the struggling ones right now. There's, I think there's lots of options up there. They just vary in the level of expense and location, and it's all private property. It's, it's not big tracts of property. I think there's some right off the coral, there's some up on top of the mountain. Those trailhead locations are critical in the sense that that's the most plausible place to develop, so we want to put them places where they can have some future development. Commissioners, that's where we're at. Jordan's here, if you have any technical questions, Jordan's here, but-
How many miles can be mapped on that?
Fifty or sixty, I believe.
We're working to get a, right now, we're going to make application to the D E P to get mitigation dollars to build a bridge, some type of bridge across the Little Coal River that would connect those two systems together. It would probably be at or near where the Ford's at there in Ivy. So we go underneath the tracks. We have to get past the rivers, that's the place we'd go under there, go across the river. As soon as we cross the river, we'd get onto our other systems. So if you would actually get to tie those two systems together, which is, that would be the ideal situation. The D E P said they would entertain an application, but they won't entertain application. We'll have to open first. They don't want to make an investment down there and some happen, us not open up that trail system and then they put dead money, they put dead mitigation into it. So they're, they put the owners on us to get open, and they told us they will entertain an application after we open.
So that, that would have, Lincoln County has water, every mile, about twenty-sixty and seventy, about the same size.
Oh, you'd have a huge system when that's done, and that, that needs to be our goal. That, whether we get mitigation dollars to put that bridge in or not, that's got to be a project we do. So if we don't get mitigation dollars, we'll try to get recreational trail dollars, and we're going to connect those two systems.
Do we have anything somewhere else like this, where there's a bridge? It's ATV's can use?
Nothing. This will be, this will be plowing new ground first. We get the mitigation dollars, they'll actually hire an engineer to design it. It's going to be a suspension type bridge where we can anchor. We, we're not ever going to try to put piers in Little Coal River, so we're, we're going to have to go to the streams, anchor it. It'll just be one ATV at a time if you go across it. Because the full-size vehicles will not be authorized on the other side, it won't be something they'll get to use. We'll actually put a neat little rail there or something that's almost like they want to do a line to get through, so they're not on the bridge. But ATVs, UTVs will be able to go between both pieces of property. And, and we can do it. It's, there are tons of suspension bridges in West Virginia that span a much, much greater span than what we're going. And because we're going to do it as suspension type bridges, there's not a lot of materials that have to be taken out there, so there's not a lot of piers. I mean, literally, got two, two posts set on each side of it, anchored back.
So after this, after we get this done, as far as the four-by-fours, this, you're going to have, in your system, you're not going to allow four?
The four-by-four vehicles will be restricted Hatfield McCoy wide to the Ivy Branch property. Hundred percent of those folks will come.
Which really gives us an advantage, because we get all those people at the other systems that wouldn't be able to ride on, so.
Yeah, no, they, they won't get to go anywhere else. That's, we're adjusting our code of state rules at our last meeting. Ferris sets on our field operations, state enforcement committee, and at our last board meeting, we approved the rules that will be sent to legislative rulemaking review. What's going to hurt us on the four-by-fours is we're going to open before they're allowed on the property. In other words, we're not going to be allowed on the property that we open, because this legislative rulemaking process won't wrap up till next June. But by July 1, they'll be there. So fourteen months from now, we'll have rules in place that regulate the, but that's not that far off in advance. And they'll still be allowed on any of those roads that are considered public roads, regardless of our rules. All the roads that are considered public roads are open to the public, irrespective of, of everything else, so.
There is a public road, that's where you-
There, there is, and we, we have no reason to believe our code of state rules won't get approved. That's just a process, and we just started that process, and you guys, me, I think y'all tweaked them and amended them, and they'll-
We have a new acronym, O R V.
Yeah, they'll go into the rulemaking review. They'll go into the Legislative Rulemaking Review Committee in June. They'll be able to have the comments for sixty days. September 1, they'll be submitted to, they'll be approved by Legislative Rulemaking Joint Committee on Rules. Then when the legislature comes in session next spring, they'll be put through with all the other rules bills, they'll be approved. But all the rules bills don't take effect till July 1. So they'll be approved, but July 1 will be, and by then, we'll be ready. By then, we'll be open, ready.
They're not going anywhere else, too.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll be ready, and we, we'll try to figure something out. If we open up in January, we'll, we just have to figure it out. We can figure something out to accommodate those guys from January to July. We just have to figure out what that is. Maybe we can get emergency rules passed or something. We'll, we'll figure it out internally at our company. We can always give special use permits, which wouldn't be beyond us to say, if you're going to come here with a full-size vehicle, got a Little Coal River, they're going to give you a special use permit for a day or a week or whatever to, to get you to our rule system.
Well, I want to commend the Hatfield McCoy organization for, I really think it's, as Commissioner Vance talked about, it's one of the only ones. And I just think without that, we'd have had a lot, a lot more issues and difficulty of selling this project, so I certainly want to thank all the people involved in Hatfield McCoy for getting involved to see what could be done, developing rules to make it happen. I think it will have an outstanding trail system.
I think it's going to be a model, and I think with the full size, I think the growth is going to be tremendous. Biggest threat we have to this trail system failing today is lodging. If we don't, when we open, if we don't, within the first couple of years, get some folks to step up and make investments, put some cabins, put some campgrounds in, I think you're going to be unhappy with what we put in place. Now, if the entrepreneurs show up and they make the investments, I think you're going to be very pleased with what happens, but you're going to get to a point that it's kind of out of our hands, it's going to be in the private sector's hands to come in and make investments. Based on the phone calls we've got, I think you've got a lot of folks that want to make investments. You've got a lot of folks outside the area. A lot of calls we've got about people developing this property have not been from here in Lincoln County. We've got calls from folks in Charleston that want to come down. We've got calls in Logan where people have did. So I think you're going to see almost a little bit of a mini land rush go on around the system once it opens, because of how accessible it is right off the four lane is just, boy, that's just fantastic. We, that's just going to be fantastic.
Yeah, I really think so. When we, when we started talking about this, and of course, we were busy at four, but I think as far as, you were right in saying, we're probably one of the only areas that[1733.58] one of the only areas that can maybe get out if not having a larger issue because of the closures too.
You do, but we need to get it down here. We need investments. That was the whole, this whole system, getting investments into these southern camps. And that, that's going to be our goal. And we'll work with those guys any way we can. And I think there's a lot of interest. But I think it's going to be a great system. We're, we're looking forward. And as soon as we get our notice to proceed, Ferris is on our board, he works close. As soon as we get our notice to proceed, we're starting construction. So the, the day after we get the green light, we'll schedule crews down here. We're, for the most part, done.
I just want to echo what Mr. McCann said, that we, we really appreciate having worked with you all. I know how, how dearly that you've been trying to get this system into the county and Mr. Kirkendall also, Senator Kirkendall also. You know, when I was on board, they never wavered it. They always had Lincoln County high on the list. And we just didn't, it was kind of on our end trying to get the property that we used to develop the system. So, but I, I really appreciate that. Because this is yours and kind of, we, we all know of it. I mean, I know you guys have been working on it. But we, we really appreciate seeing this getting nearer to where we can, if we benefit the county.
It's going to be a good project. And Ferris and Mary have worked with us. And, you know, don't forget, we also have funding available to do another system in Lincoln County in Harts. So that's, that's not off the table. We just have to work through the issues of getting that property down there. It's, this one will be first, but that system for Harts is fully funded. And we've just got to figure out the, the DNR issues down there. But if we ever get past that, we'll, you'll have a second one in this county.
Well, and one of the complaints down there with the public was that they couldn't use four, four-by-fours and things like that. And that's, so that, you know, I don't know that that system will lend itself to that. But it's something that if they've got a system, part of that, part of our system will allow it, then it gives them a place to, to dive those things.
Got any feedback from the public? Got comments? Lee?
You talked about the northern end of McCorkle side. What have you done as your plan for the extra traffic on Route 10 over one? We've got 15 families that live there. And it's a narrow road. It's just been blacktop. And, you know, you got, I want to.
I'll let Ferris and my, my, or Jordan.
You know, we got, I've spent a lifetime, you know, designing that road and building that bridge and things. And I don't have a problem with your system, but sitting and listening to you, you're talking about an enormous change in my backyard. And I want to know what you're going to do about your extra traffic on that particular road.
We, we don't, just on our end, we don't widen, improve, or, or work with.
Oh, I'm sure with that.
So it would be, it would have to be, it would have to be the state, West Virginia Division of Highways would, would have to come out and justify investment. But our crews, we do not, just, I mean, just, I'm sure we're rolling, we don't widen, improve, or otherwise, you know, adjust, adjust public highways. But the process would be, if, if there was an overburdened traffic on a highway, your actual local DOH would, would do its studies, go to their regional office. I'm not sure where yours is, everyone would guess it's probably in Huntington. They would go to the regional office, request that there are widening or an upgrade of the highway. And then that, they, they've got a process, process for that. We're on, probably right now, about 19 miles of public road in the state. Most of them are these unimproved, undivided highways. And the DOH has improved some of those roads, wider berms, pullouts and things like that. But depending on where it's at, if it's just ATV traffic, I'll tell you that they will not make improvements. So in other words, if it's not the truck and trailer traffic, they won't make improvements. They will not go in and make an adjustment to a road to accommodate ATVs and UTVs. However, if we are putting a truck and a trailer and all that on it, they will go in and make improvements. They'll, they'll do it under the guise of safety, though, not the volume of traffic. They'll say it's a safety issue for two-way traffic.
Have you got any suggestions, Lee, about that mountain? Like, if you go with it and then looked at it?
Yeah, it, it, you know, most of the area now, just been red, blacktop. Great job. But in the process, you took away the pullouts. You know, if you're driving a small car now, blacktop's a, you know, you're going to be driving if you try to get off. And you can't pass in some areas. And we could before. I mean, I'm not complaining about the blacktop. It needs some additional attention. And.
Our goal.
One other question. Will, will your ranger be able to patrol that county road and keep problems down there? I mean, we don't have any.
If we adopt it as part of our system, if it's something that our riders have to travel from wherever our trailhead is to the trail, that becomes part of our system. And we actually expand our jurisdiction to that road, not for cars. We won't, we won't go out and ride it. We could, but we tell our guys, I don't want to see it because that's, that's a whole different kind of ticket. But our guys can't ride them. They have a ticket book, write those misdemeanors they want to. But for the ATV traffic on that road, our guys will expand our jurisdiction to that. The only place we've opted not to do that is the town of Mann because the town of Mann opted not to have a helmet on it. And the day they opted not to have a helmet on it, we pulled our enforcement out of the town of Mann. So if you go to Mann, you'll see people riding without helmets. And because of that, we don't have, we, we did not have jurisdiction there. We, they have to follow our rules. The county roads, we'll, we'll actually come back to it and say, we're going to get you to approve this road. Our rules will lay down on top of that route. And there'll be signs that go up and say, if you're on this road, you've got to have a helmet, you've got to have this, you've got to have that. And our guy will have jurisdiction on that highway. And he'll write citations on that highway. And like I said, the only roads we've adopted system-wide that don't have those rules are approximately 1.7 miles around 10 in the town of Mann and the actual municipal limits of the town of Mann. And it's just because 12 years ago, the mayor at that time opted to not have a helmet ordinance in the town of Mann. And, and it's just, that's unconscionable for us. So we said, that's fine. We'll pull our jurisdiction off of that highway.
Now, it's a concern that we had out there. One of the sites that we're looking at that was impressive is the site, I think, I don't remember the first name of White's on the property out there facing Quarter G. And that's one of the sites we've looked at as a possible, because it's more of a trailhead. And if that happens, then we definitely, as I look at it, still would need some work on that mountain. I mean, if you had the trailhead over inside the park or the trail system, then you, you've got all these trailers they would have to deal with. But still, I mean, I don't have, can't visualize completely how it's going to work. But I still would envision that we will have people checking into trailhead and still pulling all their equipment inside the trail system. And I think that the issue you ran about the road needs to be addressed and dealt with. But it is, we look at it today and try to get some ideas.
You know, and as, as easy as that trailhead can be accessible to 119, the better off it's probably is. People are not wanting for freighters down the road to receive, you know, because that's one of the. Boy, the only complaints I've ever heard of there is that they'd like to be able to access without having to get out and go up and down around the hills pulling freighters. These people have four and six.
Yeah, and they're not very good drivers. Honestly, we tell you universally, they're not very good drivers. We see, we get at least a half a dozen accidents over 40 years of folks on Route 10 that have clipped the cliffs with their trailers. I mean, at least a half a dozen have called our office and say, oh, I tore the side out of my trailer. I tore the wheels off my trailer. I hit my truck into the cliffs there on Route 10. And the same thing over in, I think Dow County National. We have the same similar narrow road and we'll have one or two accidents over there a year. So the less we can put them on our rural roads. We take a guy from Ohio driving a 20-foot truck and a 40-foot trailer who's used to driving nice big straight L, L roads, that, you know, everything's a right or a left at the stop sign. And you put him on our narrow roads, his propensity to have accidents is probably 100 times greater than what it is. What do you guys think? But I don't think we could take them up to the top of that hill. I don't think that's a plausible to take trailers up. I think that's out of the, I think that's pretty much off the table.
I think our best scenario there is to keep the trailers off the mountain.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that that's, because they can't back them up at all. I've never seen so many people on trailers that can back them up. So that's another problem.
Yeah.
Is there anything else, Commissioner?
That's the category I call it. I can't back them up.
Before we get too far, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Gloria Brown for arranging the meeting with Bill Muller Jr. on this property to get this thing started.
Now, you, you guys are the catalyst that caused this to happen. For everyone else, we, we looked at this property a long time ago and he seems very amenable. And I think that Mr. Muller is going to be amenable to turning loose, at least on a lease basis, some of his property for development, which is real critical because some of the best possible sites that put things are actually on his real estate with, literally in the core of the trail system. I mean, the trail system kind of loops around them. They're right there in his real estate.
I think we have a chiropractor in Lincoln County who's purchased the property for the.
Land speculation will start now. The day we get our notice to proceed, you'll see people from outside the area coming in trying to cabbage up the property along. We're already seeing that underground in all area and all of that system. The day we say, that notice proceeds in, they start working toward that. You will see folks coming in and speculate on the property. That's just, that happens.
Mr. Hale, do you have a question?
No, I'm just concerned about the trailer. Are they going to be allowed to go up the hill and park it inside the trail system?
I, I don't know. I don't think so. Not on, I mean, on the other end maybe, right? To the trailhead.
Yeah, on the southern end. But on the northern end, it's just not feasible.
Because the first two gets hung to beating each other in two-wheel drive. They will not be able to back up or nothing.
That's what Ferris and I thought.
No, it's, it would be a major highway improvement to make a blind.
I think we need that, just because we'll be more trapped. Maybe a couple of pullovers, Christopher Corbillo's got away with breaking cars. But it will work. Any other comments? Again, appreciate you guys coming down and certainly we'd order you coming back and saying we're ready to.
Well, we've, you know, we've got the crews set aside. As soon as we get the notice to proceed, highways will start. However, between now and then, we have to get nailed down on these sites for trailhead. We'll, we would really want those nailed down before we get over and start pushing dirt. We don't want to get in there pushing dirt and then come back and find where, where without something on that northern side. We, we really, that's the one that's, good job to get nailed down.
Well, just to mention, whenever you're ready, we'll be ready.
Oh, I know, I know. It's, it's, the burden's on our back. We're just, there's a pretty finite universe of places we can go over there. A lot of, I think the Black Cross gave the idea, but we haven't talked to anyone. Commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is a gun battle. The middle school is requesting money for a book fair. They had their book fair at the end of April, 1st of May. But I talked to John Lynn and she said that they could still order books and they would like to order books to encourage reading through the summer. And if the county commission could help provide to purchase books, they would truly.
I was trying to think, did we have West Ham?
Yes.
$500.
Southside Ranger.
Yeah, we have Andrew, we have West Ham on the book fair.
I thought it was $500. I just, I didn't want to read this. That's what I thought. I would enter $500 towards the 100.
Second.
Motion second. Oh, yes. Motion carries.
Some people, let me honest, may be happy about this, but Rick, I couldn't be here because he had a meeting. And Ryan brought me over some things this morning. Ryan had to go up there. They were repairing a septic system. He couldn't be here. So I have given the commissioners the reports. Yeah, there's your report. They just wanted to show that they, for phase four, I can't show them. For phase four, it looked like that the bid for the contract number one, 12 homes for the direct discharge would, would be awarded to Wiseman in the amount of 334,000. Contract number two, for three homes replacing, that is, I think, for 27,000 would go to T.R. Davis. Three homes replacing a unit system would go to T.R. Davis in the amount 17,600. Contract number four, one home moving system, one home, diverse, drain, 19,800. And contract five, a bigger four homes, in ground, and that would be 177,400 would go to T.R. Davis. So I think that's something that just need the county commission to act on to accept the bid committees awarding the so-called contracts one, two, three, four, five as stated.
Okay. Any discussion not entertain a motion to award the bid as presented? Motion is your second.
Second.
And motion is second to award the bid as specified to Wiseman and T.R. Davis. Oh, yes. Motion carries.
Okay. And then the next thing, they just wanted the commission to, our final budget, the wastewater project, phase four final budget, construction 575,800, $220 for a sign. Technical services for per case would be $2,000. Legal, for legal ads would be $400. Administrative for salaries per inch for three part-time, one full-time, 180,600. 14,000 for supplies, equipment, postage, mileage, 20 bags of feed at $400 would be 14,000. 4,100 for sample analysis, 5,200 for direct discharge permits, 650 for in-ground permits. Future change orders, 20,000 for contingency, 48,790 for, 750,706.
Okay. Did he request that we approve that or did he just information?
That was just information.
Okay. And I did speak to Rick back in the week. And one of the things that he thinks is going to happen, I guess, because I told him I didn't want to get too excited. It's work and kept with records and all this. But there may be a chance to have more phases be on the board. And I said, well, Rick, are you going to stay with us until it's done? Well, no, I don't know about that. But I may help to get it started on it. But apparently, the DEP people are pleased with the work that they have done. There's some money out there. And so I basically told him, try to get more approved if it's available. We may hear about some projects.
Okay. Next thing is the Harts Community Center. County Government Day still doing good. But just an update on our sewer system. We do have a major concern there. One of the pumps have went down. It's totally out. We had it drained. Ricky Frye went and he was on his second load taking it out. Had a terrible, terrible crash there in Ranger. Someone hit him head-on. So people can't really empty any more out for us. The person that hit him was right there in front of the boys, curved there. And they were doing like 70 or 80 in the ditch and out. But anyways, he said that his truck is down for a month now. And, but anyways, one of the pumps are totally down. And Dick Morrison is trying to work with Tim Davis for the senior citizen center. There's too much garbage going into the system. We should have a whole anti-system. Now, on to McCorkle Community Center. I know that we've got Lawrence giving us an update here. But I do want to state that, and he can, we'll let him give a report here on the county government day. It was a success. They had eight people, I think, that came in. The girl that was over there said they just, the people that came in was just so happy that the system was over there with the price of gasoline and everything. They just were really happy to have county government there. So I do want to, early voting. Merle may want to give an update on that. But I think early voting was a success there.
It was. Really no complaints, to be honest.
As well as, I think that we're really utilizing our community centers in both areas for the early voting, county government day.
Speaking of community centers, have any communication often with the school board about the Harts, the old Harts High School, Mills School?
Sure, it is not. But I've had other people calling, wanting to know, you know, if they could get a daycare or anything. I just referred on to the Board of Education.
And that summer program wants to come in, too.
They, they talked about this a month ago, but not since.
I think they're concerned about the crowded condition there or something. I'm going to see how things pan out.
Are they talking about putting a note here on Harts?
We've had people asking about.
I had just talked to a lady the other day that said she was willing to.
She called, someone called here. She didn't give her name and said that she would like to talk to the commission about getting a daycare.
I guess, from the commission point of view, if, if and when the school board comes to us and requests us to consider taking over that, I think we need to have some serious discussion about the sewer system. Because the people who are working with us, the Harts, the Curlsford Community Center, basically tell us that the sewer system at the high school, the old high school, is completely gone. And you're talking about $250,000 something to replace. So that made me think about, we just need to make sure we, whomever discusses this, we need to have that as part of discussions. And also, maybe. And also maybe a different way of running, I just see this as such a big project, that it concerns me that how we might operate this if we decide to take it, how we may operate it outside of just having a Gummy Day and a gym for recreation and some of those kind of things, because there's so many classrooms there, twenty-four, twenty-five or something, that's a big expense, and we just need to talk about how we might want to do that if we want to. Just my point of view.
Okay, and I have a question and a comment. I've heard Judy mention that someone had called in regards to a daycare, and then the Commissioner Vance mentioned someone had talked to him. If, if someone in the Harts area or anywhere else in Lincoln County wants to pursue a daycare, that will be something that they will have to do on their own, but not, because we are not going to assist or get involved with any more daycare centers.
Now, that's what we decided on, the one we tried before, we lost twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was, when I heard that, it kind of threw some red flags up, and I was a little fearful that we were going to try to get back into that business and just think it wouldn't be the, it would not be a wide investment with the taxpayers' dollars.
I agree, well, and I didn't take it that way. The way I took it was, somebody may want to rent space to have a daycare.
That is my.
Okay, okay.
And maybe we, if we had some more equipment or something, I had no problem with using it in that, long as it stayed in that facility, but I'm not sure what we do have there.
Sharon, do you have anything to add about the outreach or anything? And there was another issue that came up about the internet at McCorville. We do have internet service, which is a wireless router there. It'll be the commission's direction, how they want to handle that, if they want the public to have access to that or not. You know, we can give the password out to the board there, or Lawrence, or Sharon, and it'd be up to you all on how you want them to pursue it.
Well, we need to sit down and have a discussion about what's about the funding. Well, let's just, sit down and talk about that. Here soon.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the health initiative. Commissioners, we did have a weigh-in since our last meeting. We are, the commission, or the courthouse is two hundred and fifty-four pounds lighter now, and some of us have wonderful A-1 sever cords, so it is working good. We will have another weigh-in at the end of the month, and we're still eating good. We have a relay for life tomorrow night, that some of us can get some extra laps on the field, exercise. Patty, would you want to enlighten a little bit about relay for life, what's going on?
No, Sean probably could tell better.
He could work.
He's a better speaker.
The relay for life is tomorrow night at the primary care center in Hamlin, beginning at 6:00 P.M. and running through the night until 4:30 or 5:00, I think. And I guess the idea is that teams, I think there's thirty-seven, thirty-eight teams and one thousand registered participants, so it's, it's got really big since they started organizing it in January. And the idea is teams will relay throughout the whole evening around the track, raising funds for the American Cancer Society for Cancer Research, et cetera. And while all that's going on, there will be a whole series of events, entertainment, there'll be a commemorative ceremony, a candlelit luminaria ceremony around nine or ten o'clock, and a whole other range of various activities, some fun, some quite emotional, I'm sure, but starts tomorrow night at 6:00 P.M. Looks to be a huge event, I think.
So if people want to come out into?
Open to everyone, yeah.
And there will be food there that they can buy for being hungry?
Lots of food, it sounds like. Lots and lots. I think we need a relay for diabetes next week.
Okay. I want to move in. I need a motion to approve the bills that submitted for payment.
Second.
Motion second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointments, Wilson Salmers is submitted by Merle D. Clark.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the exoneration orders as submitted by Tracy Dempsey Assessor.
And motion?
In a second.
Second, oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the community participation grant program application for the Lincoln County Little League Hamlin area in the amount of two thousand dollars and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign thus stated documents.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, and oh yes, motion carries.
And I hope everybody understands, these are just applications, they have not been approved for any months. I need a motion to approve the community participation grant program application for the challenge, West Virginia, in the amount of one thousand dollars and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign thus stated documents.
I'll second that. Motion second, and oh yes.
I recuse myself of that item.
Motion carries, two yes, one recused.
I need a motion to approve the community participation grant program application for the Mid River Bluegrass Gospel Festival in the amount of two thousand dollars and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign thus stated documents.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the community participation grant program application for the McCorville and Harts Community Center in the amount of four thousand dollars and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign thus stated documents.
Motion second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the community participation grant program application for the guy in River Seine Waterway Development in the amount of four thousand dollars and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign thus stated documents.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the community participation grant program application for the crime watch in the amount of two thousand dollars and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign thus stated documents.
Motion second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the contract binding between the Lincoln County Commission and West Virginia Development Office for the Lincoln County Fairs and Festivals in the amount of ten thousand dollars and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign thus stated documents.
So moved.
Second. Motion, oh yes.
That's our sewer?
Um, no, I don't think it's for sewer, but.
Fencer?
Hold on a second, it is. The project will include the purchase and rental of equipment, staging and promotion of events out at the Lincoln Kelly Fairgrounds. Do you know about that, Jack?
It's okay. I'd get a reading on that.
I need a motion to approve an inner office budget revision for the office of the assessor transferring one thousand dollars from retirement expense to supply materials as requested by Tracy Dempsey Assessor.
Motion second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Gary McAllister to the Quarter G Regional Development and Boarding Board of Directors.
So moved.
Second. Motion second.
Who's he, Hero?
Oh, yes.
I need a motion to approve the extended warranty and support services agreement with B.I. Incorporated, the manufacturer of our electronic home incarcerated equipment, is requested by Jerry Swanson, Chief Probation Officer.
Motion is your second.
Second.
Motion second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the transfer of employment of Darrell Baker from the assessor's office to full-time incarceration officer effective immediately as requested by Jerry Swanson.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the employment of James E. Lovejoy as home incarceration officer effective June the first, two thousand twelve, as requested by Jerry Swanson.
Motion second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the community participation grant program application for the Allen Creek Lions Club in the amount of eight thousand dollars and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign thus stated documents.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a donation to the Lincoln County High School Prom Committee for the assistance with the drug-free activities in the amount of one thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to reschedule the hearing on the estate of Jack and Ruby Cooper until June the seventh, two thousand twelve, at 6:00 P.M.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, and oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a drawdown request number one in the amount of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents for the county business park and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign thus stated documents.
So moved. Motion is your second.
Second.
Second, oh yes, motion carries.
That was the development of the, what's that, one park that gravelled area blocked. This is where we had a twenty-five thousand dollars to develop infrastructure.
He'll pay.
I need a motion to approve the budget revision is submitted, to be submitted to the State Auditor's Office for approval. Mostly what it is is for the elections. We went over an election.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, oh yes, motion carries, and we will have some next meeting for October eleventh.
You will have inner office budget revisions. We're not too bad, but we'll have some for the inner office. But this will be the last one that goes to the state.
You need to notify all elected officials that they need to look at your budget. First again.
The first, the first meeting will be the last time that we will be able to approve any inner office. This is the last one that we can approve for one for the state. The next thing on the agenda is the Big Harts Waterline Extension. Unfortunately, our buddy Jim Boggs will not be at any more of our meetings, he's never worked in the region two. Mike Webb did send up a bunch of things for us to approve and sign. The one that we have here is on the Big Harts Waterline Extension, said it was the environmental review and a request for release of, release of funds, which Jim had told me before that it was going to be a budget amendment and a drawdown, but Mike said there wasn't anything there, so I guess all we need to do is approve the request for a lease, release of funds and the environmental review, and give Mr. McCann authorization to sign all the reports.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, to provide the request to submit to Region Two on the Big Harts project, oh yes, motion carries.
Okay, on the ten mile water lines, we need to, we have a drawdown request of number seven in the amount of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-one cents, and I have here's a request for number two. One invoice is from Fanco in the amount of seventy-five thousand seven hundred and eleven sixty, and three invoices from Region Two, planning and development in amount of two thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and eleven cents. So I need a motion to approve the drawdown request, approve payment to two invoices I just stated.
All right, you've heard the request, is there a motion?
So moved.
And motion is second, and oh yes, motion carries.
Okay, is there anyone in the public that's known either that would like to speak at this time? Yes, ma'am, state your name, please.
Diane Kaufman.
You can come up front if you want.
You say Diane Kaufman?
Yes, I have called, I'm supposed to be in on, but apparently. I am representing the citizens of Terrace Lane on Allen Creek, considering, concerning about the trash and hoarding of junk and stuff. I have some pictures, I have a lot more stuff. I've got about four hundred and some pictures. I've got about twelve thousand dollars for the damage from his flooding, from his stuff. He's got a dilapidated house, he's got lumbered where he's hollied in from tearing down houses. He's got trash, he's got ungodly, I mean, it's just ungodly. Every person on Terrace Lane signed this. I mean, I was so upset, I tried to sell my house, they will not post my house because of this trash. And why should I suffer? And I've got rats as big coming in my garage, eating the lids off of the totes. So, I mean, you know, I've got grandchildren, we fought to get a septic system, we got in a septic system from the help of D E P because my granddaughter fell in a septic system. I mean, you know, I, I can't live like this, and now that with the flood, my property's fixed, I have to see more of it, and these pitchers do justice, I'm serious. If you, if you're just going to look at it, Greg Bitcher's my neighbor, a lot of the other people out there, they can tell you about this, and it's been an ongoing thing that I've tried to get help. I've lived there seven years, June twenty-fourth, and I've had nothing but trouble with all this trash. I mean, he's, we're, he's got buildings that's leaning over in the creek that carries the trash out of the buildings, you know, this house, like I said, it's dilapidated in the back, and it washes all this stuff down on us, it stops up our bridges and flushes.
Have you talked to Steve or Julie Thomas concerning this?
Um, I did get some, talked to Steve a little. They're supposed to be checking on, I've not got any responses, and I'm tired of it, I, I just need to get some help. I mean, all of us, I mean, it washed our road out from stuff where, that had washed from his property and stopped up and washed the road out. I mean, my house, it was up on my, coming in my back door, all my insulation under my house, I had, it's a double lot, I had to have the foundation redone under it because the logs where they cut wood and stuff had come up under my house and shifted and broke cinder blocks.
Well.
I mean, it even hit my power pole, and knocked my power that I had, spent twenty-seven hundred dollars for utilities before I could, afraid my house was going to burn.
Well, we'll work with you, I've got Erno, Steve, him first, see what, before he's add on, but he's in charge of this type program, or simulations, clean, right, citations, but.
He's been written citations before, for some reason, nothing's getting done. The only part that got cleaned is where they moved it over, and the guys that, on the, when they were putting the septic system, they literally had to move the building out of the way to put the septic system in. He's got a trailer that they cut off, and he says he's going to use for storage, but it's open and it's full of junk, and I mean, like I said, you know, I'm putting out rat poison, and they're eating the lids off of my totes, and I've seen them as big as possums. I can't live like that, it's inhumane.
And you're talking D N R?
Uh, D N R? No, I've talked with D E P, but not D N R.
Might want to talk to them.
D N R, okay, that'd be one of my projects, because, like I said, I've been there, be seven years this July, or June twenty-fourth, and I've dealt with this, and I've begged and begged and begged and tried to get help. I even asked for him to bring the litter control, but at the time, he didn't have trash service, and it was, I mean, I'm talking trash out there. And they've got a bunch of dogs that's tearing it all over, you know, brings it to my house and stuff, and I'm cleaning up, but what I'm, I asked for if they could get us some, those containers that you put the trash in, that I'd be even willing to help put that in the containers to get it off the properties so that it wouldn't be at my house.
Some people have a hard time recognizing what's trash and what's.
Well, they don't, they're hoarding. They don't, they think that, they're saying, oh, well, I'm not sick, he's sick, and he's not able to get this, but he's able to haul all this stuff in, why is he not able to remove this stuff? That's why I'm complaining, I'm having a part with D E P. He says, well, he's sick, you know, he's not able to do it. Well, he was able to bring this in, and he's able to remove it. If he's able to bring it in, he's able to remove it. Sorry, that's the way I feel about it. I keep my place nice, neat and clean, and I would like for his to be a little cleaner, a lot cleaner. I mean, I'm not saying it has to be excellent like mine, but I would like for it to be not an awesome.
I'm with you, I'm with you, we just need to try to help solve the problem if we can, we'll work with you, I just always hate that people have to be exposed like you've had, they get so mistreated and all excited and all that, but I don't blame anybody for wanting to protect their property and wanting to make their community a better place.
That's mine, I mean, you know. Oh, that's mine. I mean, you know, snakes and stuff out there, you know, they've got.
It's a health issue, for sure. Not only is it unsavable, it's a health issue. We will make it, and just come back if we don't get it resolved.
Oh, I'll be back. I've been on D. E. P. I've been on everybody trying to get this. I don't want this wrong. D. N. R.?
They can write citations.
Okay, thank you.
Get somebody to do something about the citation I heard.
They let it go. They, for some reason, he just gets off with all this stuff.
Well, since it's been brought to our tent, maybe we can arrange somebody else.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time?
Go ahead. I was trying to make a move.
On April the nineteenth, I requested under the Freedom of Information Act, the documents about the Folsberg Playground Equipment, and I have not received that. But since then, I went up there and took some pictures. I wanted to show you guys what I was talking about with unsecured locations with the doors. This is the steps with the water going down there. Here's more standing water. And initially, when I went up there, these two blue sticky, sticky slides and one half set of steps were there. And then when I went back, there's new equipment mysteriously showed up in the same room. And then this, when you first went in the door, was another new piece of equipment that showed up down there. And then this was in total blackness, and I just shot a photo. It looks like the top and some rope. And then here's a picture of a slide that has ceiling tiles falling down on it, too. So, but to go down in there when you're looking at it, you can't see because it's totally darkness. The photographs showed it. So I know, I noticed it was on the agenda to be discussed later, but I didn't want you to see, you know, what the conditions were.
We had it moved out there and had a plan to put it together.
I don't, well, I'd like to put it together, plan, if I know what's there. And, you know, I, there has to be some accountability to, to list what it is. There has to be some design factor. I've already got people that are willing to volunteer, you know, to help with it.
We need to get on it and make it happen, for sure.
Well, when I get this information, I can move forward. So that's how I'll know what equipment's there. Because, you know, if you don't know what's there.
So you're using that as a reason not to do it?
No, I have to know what's there. You can't just take a swing and a piece of steps.
We authorize it to take it out and put it down in coordination with the principal of the middle school, K. Eight, and, and see what you can come up with it. Because I have no idea, even though you've got a document saying this was purchased, we still don't know what's there.
Well, I don't, well, that's what I'm saying.
But I'd like to have it moved down to the K. Eight school. We authorized that the other day for you to be in charge of. So really, just get the, get the stuff and take it down and see what we got.
Well, I have to know what stuff was ordered, and because I don't know what belongs to the Folsbergs Community Center and what belongs to the schools, because I requested the information and didn't get it.
Well, but it belongs to the county commission.
But you said you were in negotiations with the school board.
I want you to get with the principal down there and come up with a plan.
Okay, I did try to meet with the principal. She wasn't available.
You haven't yet?
No, I tried. She wasn't available. So, but I did see yesterday that there is playground equipment.
Get some work done, and I'll have a whole lot more confidence in you.
Well, I would like to get the work done, but I'm not going into a school building that's owned by the county commission and remove equipment when I don't know what equipment was purchased to begin with. Because I don't want to be, you know, considered that I'm taking the.
Is there, would you feel more comfortable than somebody in the commission would get an inventory of that?
Yes, that's what I, this is what I requested April nineteenth and have it receive the information.
But I was just wondering, as far as what's up there right now.
Yes.
If you knew that, then you could go ahead and start moving.
Well, you can move it and get a plan.
If you felt there was some discrepancy between what you have now versus what.
Well, it was purchased. I don't know if things were lost.
Right. I can understand that. What I'm just saying is if, if we had someone that could document what's there now.
I want this information. This is what I want.
I was just trying to figure out how we could get that quickly down in the school quicker.
Well, I've got some volunteers with me. If it's going to the school, you know, is it, is it the community center's equipment? Or is it the new schools' equipment? I don't know. So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to clarify from the last meeting.
Well, I can understand you wanting to have an inventory.
Yes.
We need that whatever.
You got a copy of the letter. I gave Mr. McCann one. I gave Sean one. But no, on April nineteenth, I can go make you another copy. Because it was requested in writing.
Charles?
Yes.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that Bethany Tony and Rocky Atkins, who both serve on the community center board, told me back maybe a month ago that the principal at the new art school had the board prints for the playground equipment. That's just for information purposes.
Okay.
I'm not confident that I would check with the principal.
Who gets the confirmation? Okay, and.
Thank you.
I stay in that squad. He's on the phone here. Thomas, you think you could find anybody between you and Mr. Rainey, both in that community, to go down and get an inventory of that? What's, what's down in the basement?
I'll, I'll speak with Bethany Tony on the board. She's, she's really good in precise in keeping notes. Maybe I could talk to her. She can work with, with the board in getting a, an inventory.
And when they do that, I guess the inventory would be probably, since it's unusual type of equipment, a picture and description would probably be the way to do it. It doesn't have a name.
Okay.
That's how Bethany, she needs me to go in with her. I would like to do that up there a lot.
Okay, I'll let her know.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Okay, all the commission concerns. Just look over at my board and play.
Discussing previously about the building next door, trying to look into it in consideration of judicial annex for family court and magistrate court. And we had the people from Supreme Court come down. I think we briefly talked about it before. They definitely are willing, and they think it's a great site. They're willing to provide funding for all the, I guess, equipment needed for electronics and things like that, for the video type systems needed, and plus security, but not for construction, as far as renovation and for purchase. I did receive a call last week from one of the people that maybe is on the board of director over for the church, and they definitely still are interested in selling it. They have originally, the price was like six hundred thousand dollars. That was a whole lot more than what it evaluated for, for face value. But I told them that was too much, as far as I was concerned, and we would be willing, we still like to have the building, but it's one of those issues that we need to discuss as a commission. Maybe what I'd like to do is, at the next meeting, assuming all three of us can be here, that we have just maybe a little closed session, or I don't like those, but maybe just to talk about after what an offer could be and things like that. You agree with them?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then we'll do that maybe at the, what is?
June the seventh. Would you want to wait for it to submit out, maybe?
Maybe, that's what, if we can, yeah, rather than having to, we're making a decision. We just couldn't talk about it. Yeah, this is kind of a work session. Just to let you know what they had told me. Because some of that stuff, they may not want in public. I don't know. Cause of wars and, you know, it was really. All right, next time.
I attended the local elected officials and executive committee meeting Tuesday for the Workforce West Virginia at the Logan Conference Center. It was my first face-to-face meeting with these people, and I, Mickey Brown also attended for Boone County as one of commissioners. But the only thing that I really felt that was important, I mean, I guess it did a lot of important things as far as our, our, our counties affected, would be they're looking at changing the bylaws of Workforce West Virginia to allow them to go ahead and set up a program for summer youth employment, different from what they have now. I think right now it's based on a hundred and thirty percent, and they really don't have much of a program right now because the D. H. H. R. said they probably, they weren't funding for it, so they didn't want to have it this summer. But they, the people on the, that board feel that, and I do too, that it's important to try, if we can have a program where we can employ youth in the summer, we should do that. I, you know, I, I've worked as a, during my college years, I worked as a supervisor for the City River Program over young kids and worked with the D. O. H., the same thing, working summertime with the kids. And I think it's real, it really helped me develop, and I think it really helped these kids. Some of them I still see now that are doing really well, that they even bring up the stuff that we talked about, why they were working with me and things. But what they're trying to do is change the bylaws so that they can go after monies other than federal monies and things like that for this program, and change the guidelines to where it would be two hundred or two hundred and twenty percent of the poverty level. Because a lot of the, I guess, the people that this program is originally set up for, there's a lot of people need help above that hundred and thirty percent of the poverty level. And so what they're attempting to do now is, we will vote, we meet the fifteenth of June back up there as a full board, and we'll vote then whether to go ahead with that. We've all, the lawyer's already drawn up those changes to be looked at and things of that nature. But what this will, they can't use, you can't use any of that money to start, the money from Workforce West Virginia to start this thing. There's no, you can't, you have to keep monies separate because it is based upon different eligibility requirements and things like that. And their status that they have as, in their corporation requires it to have the bylaw changed to allow them to do this, and this will be set up totally as a separate funded mechanism and working separate from Workforce West Virginia. It will be basically the same kind, same people dealing with it. But it would allow them to seek funding from like Walmart, some of the foundations to go ahead and try to set this up and, and allow more participation by our youth. Plus, it allows us every year, we know we want to have the program, if we can get it started. We don't have to wait from year to year just to determine if it's going to be funded and things like that. And this could be work, along with if we receive funding from the D. H. H. R. to go ahead with the programs in the summer youth programs that they've had before, we can do that, plus do this program. So we pick up a lot more people. It doesn't cost additional tax money because we're going to be going after grants. But we have to have, they, now, they did request or ask the commissions if they might be interested in contributing to that. And I, and Mickey said they were subtracted over in Boone County. They probably couldn't do it. But I told them that we've always been very progressive about those things, and that if we could see our way to provide some minimal funding to that, get it started, that, that, that the commission would consider those things. But I do think if you look at the impact it could potentially have in rural areas, especially for these kids in the summertime, you know, they not only learn what a job is and what a paycheck is and things like that, but they also stay out of trouble when they work. And they learn to work with each other, and they learn to be productive, I think, more so than they would be with the other activities they might get into. But that, basically, as far as what we discussed, they went over the finances of Workforce West Virginia and things like that. But I think as far as we're concerned here in Lincoln County, I think this is an important program. If they're willing to go ahead and set it up and try to get it funded with grants and things like that, our kids could really benefit from it.
Kids need to learn how to work, for sure. Or be made to work, maybe.
Mr. Rainey, do you have anything?
The, the only thing I want to touch on is that this week, and I'm sure most people have seen the articles and the news stories about the Wreck decision. The Wreck decision this week hit its thirty-year anniversary, and that was the landmark school funding case that originated in Lincoln County, actually originated from a court bill. And I think it's important for, for us to continue to have a dialogue about what has happened in the state school system in terms of the results and the impacts due to the Wreck decision. I believe personally, and I know that a lot of grassroots organizers across the state agree that the Wreck decision has actually been very damaging to the, the state's education system. I don't think that Judge Wreck meant it to be a damaging decision, but I think that the policymakers and that those in power in the year that the decision came down, they implemented the Wreck decision in a way that was very destructive and damaging to rural areas. The School Building Authority was, was designed out of the Wreck decision, and the O. B. P. A., the Office of Educational Perform methods, was also a result of the Wreck decision. Both of those entities are unelected and have a history of going into the rural counties such as Lincoln and coming up with reasons to take over school systems and force school consolidation, and using the equitable funding as the argument, making sure that all kids have an equal chance of a first-class education. And in reality, research is very clear that when you bust small children, especially low-income kids, it's very destructive and hard for those kids to be able to overcome that disadvantage as they grow older. So, and also the O. B. P. A. taking over counties and not showing the results from the takeovers. It's very questionable if the takeovers are effective at all. There's never been an independent office of the counties that have been taken over to see the effectiveness of those takeovers. Frankly, I think that most of those takeovers in the southern part of the state have been to force school consolidation, but they have not been focused on raising student achievement, which I think is the state word of education, missing the ball when it comes to making sure the kids are getting a first-class education. I would just simply close with this. You know, at the state level, our government, our education system continually is, is looked at as a business model. People compare the school system, county commission, every form and every level of government, the effectiveness of how we operate in a business model. Well, when you look at how much tax dollars are invested in the education system of the state, it's, it's about the highest per student in the nation, and you look at the results we're getting, which are the lowest in the country, the question would be if we're looking at it in a business model, why someone doesn't go to a state school board meeting and look at the superintendent as the C. E. O. and the Board of Education members as the Board of Directors, and ask them to give an explanation as to why they all should not resign. Because if you can't operate a system more effectively with the amount of dollars they have, and show results when you take over systems, you rip the democratic rights away from the people. There needs to be results. That's all I would have to say.
Thank you.
I want to make one comment. What Mr. Rainey says is that not just the kids, but the whole communities don't have a place to go. You know, back when Guyan Valley High School was open and all the rest of them, they use that as a center for the community to be involved in things and to get things done. And one of the worst things I see from this consolidation is that it takes the heart out of our communities, the place that we can go be, the place that we can go support. And, and I completely agree with Thomas is that there's, there's many studies that show when you bust little kids long distances, it really affects their ability to learn. And, and this is something that I don't think was given enough importance when they made these decisions. That's all.
You know, can I add one more thing?
Yours, yours.
Well, with, with the state Board of Education talks about consolidation, and, you know, primarily, my concern at this point is elementary consolidation outside of Lincoln County, but also within Lincoln County, because I don't want to see any child that on the bus over what would be considered acceptable. But the argument usually is the fact that there's not enough money to keep a small school open. And what has happened, and research shows, when those schools that are the centers of the communities are closed, then what you have is you have a domino effect of local businesses closing and people moving away. And when that happens, you have less tax dollars. So then you have, because new schools, even though you close schools, you may have three and close to one, the new school is larger and has, in some cases, and it will, in many cases, the overhead is even more than the one the small schools were to operate that facility. When you have this new facility that's just as expensive. When you have this new facility that's just as expensive, but due to people moving and businesses closing, you have less tax dollars. So actually, it, it's not an effective business model, and I hate to keep using the business model, but you have to operate the system effectively and have the money to make sure you deliver a quality education. And if you're making decisions that are educationally harmful, but I'll...
Loski, please. Appreciate those comments. You know, the other side of that is we, we know that transportation issue is a big one for kids of all ages. But also, as I said, parent involvement is a key to success of kids. And parent involvement means being in, right there at school, making sure that this happens or that happens. And we've heard all kinds of discussion the last six months ago.
If you would like to make a...
About trunse, and it seems to me like if, that's one of those things that if you don't know where your kids are at, what they're doing, then the bigger the school, the less likely that's going to be. So it just seems to me like all this thing works together for, not for the best of all kids, maybe for the best of some kids, but not for all kids. I don't know that there's a whole lot that you can do about it in, in our situation, but it doesn't mean that we can't keep thinking about it and looking for ways. And maybe as Thomas said, when we talk about elementary schools, trying to figure out how can we keep as many open in the small communities. You lose the people when you get farther away from the side of the school. The buy-in's not there and there's transportation issues and all of this. Couple others from my side. I had got a letter, Scotty, read it before yesterday. Jimmy Genato, the Director of the Homeland Security. And basically, they have entered into a new agreement, Interstate Mutual Aid Agreement. And basically what requires, he says Allen will probably be, doesn't say Allen, he'll merge as the Service Director, will probably be soon coming with us with a resolution that we need to adopt. It requires us to do that, so it's mentioned to you. So down the road here next few days, we probably will have to do something along that line. Just a few of the things that happened since the last meeting, a long time ago. April the twentieth, provided some oversight along with others on the voting machines for early voting. It was one of those things with the machines, it's going out, early vote needs to be certified. April twenty-seventh, conducted the Route Ten Coalition Meeting in Salt Rock. Who were providing us an update of a project near the Lincoln and Logan line known as Tony Curve. And that project was moved along. One issue was brought up about all of the extra rock and whatever been removed from that site. It's been moved across the road to property and it could be, it may be an issue of too much of it and we have to find another site, but that was an issue. Mr. Stutler, he's gone. He was at that meeting along with Tommy Atkins from Lincoln. Also, we had Ted Slung had called and talked to Judy about a safety issue on Route Ten. He came to the meeting and it was held at Salt Rock, you know, the senior center. And he had, he got somewhere Patty's Springs, something there on Route Ten. And there've been several accidents out there. We are still looking at trying to get some more safety money, develop some passing lanes in the mountains between Huntington and Chattanooga. Just trying, some pull-overs and things like that to give people a chance to have a safer trip. May one, again, some oversight from the Commission on Public Test and Voting Machines for May eighth elections. All machines were certified and be part of the working order. May eight, election day, we were required to meet around four o'clock that evening to open the absentee ballot box and have a staff, two Democrats, two Republicans, to go through those ballots, making the necessary calculations and referring those that need to be challenged and so forth to the commission. May nine, attended the regular monthly meeting of Tri River Transit. In addition to the normal thing we did as a board, conducted the annual evaluation of the Director at the Center, Paul Smith. And does a good job there, came up with a pretty good evaluation. May ten, participated in the thing we talked about here a while ago, going to, riding the Hatfield McCoy. And they didn't mention that square, but they do plan to have two vehicles the next time when you get the trails cleaned out and more developed, invite any and all commissioners and others around. Like, they'll take a, look at it and see what's going on before they officially open. And I told them I wanted to see it and I got to see about all I could handle, probably. So it took me through a couple of things. May fourteenth, we were able with the help of all involved, both Commissioner Banks and Rainey and County Clerk DeWu and the staff and people from the Secretary of State's office, was able, we were able to complete our canvassing in one day. So, and the question I had on that, has the state request served by that?
There were still a couple of counties out there?
Yes, there have.
All right. That concludes my...
I have one thing, this is from the Pound Punters, I think this is an invitation to the issue. And they also extended this invitation to all of the courthouse.
Pound Punters, they're usually here.
Yeah, they, they had some other engagements that they had to be at.
Oh, they've done some good things. Okay, I'll just read it for the information. Pound Punters request honorable presence at their balloon releasing ceremony Friday, first of June of two thousand and twelve, five o'clock, at the Bud River Volunteer Party House on Goldger Road. So they do have information here about replying and things like that. So if that's intent, then we can tell them we'll try to be there.
Now, they did mention, because there are some other people who want to be there from out the area, but they did mention that they could, could not take photographs this particular... And I, I'm fairly, and there's, and there's reasons for that with the people that they're working with nationally and things like that.
Yeah, that's what I'd heard.
But I, and I don't know exactly what that means, but I mean, Kevin Farrell can tell you guys anything you want about that. But he did say that the group that they were working with nationally would not, did not want any photographs to be taken.
Okay, Pound Punters.
I have a big job.
Anything else need to be... Looks like we'll be meeting June the seventh, six o'clock. June the twenty-first, ten.
Yeah, I've got something like that, I'd be impressed you all with.
Give us your names just for the record.
Charles Agins. We had a show playing at a bench for Berlesburg School, pro wrestling. We've been having it up there for a while, for, well, since first year. And we switched it around to have it on every third Saturday. And then we done one this past month, we done it on Friday. And they said we could, two months ago, said we could have it every third Saturday. And yesterday, we got word that we can't even have no more. At Rocky, he said that we couldn't have no more of them. So, and we already got people booked for the show because we started ahead of time, the outfits start ahead of time, months ahead of time, just to get these guys in to perform.
The only thing I know is what he called him, he talked to me yesterday and I told him that I would talk to you, the commission, about it. And I have...
I don't know what's going on or what's...
Did somebody get hurt or something?
No, no, no of.
Do you have liability insurance?
Yeah, we got, we got insured on the stuff and everything and we, we got...
No, no, not on the stuff, on, when you go into a location, you have to have liability.
Yeah, we got insured. We got, we got everything. We got, we got stuff for any of them, but...
What was your number again, sir?
Charles Agins.
What's the company number?
Seven, seven, eight, thirty-nine, eighty-four.
We just have to do some call and find out because...
Is the one you all Greg Smith?
Yeah.
Okay, you're the one I talked to, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, did, did Rocky say the board director said you guys couldn't have it?
Uh, I, I talked to him about that, he's the one that let us know.
My name's Greg Smith. Well, what it was, I went down and I had to pay our rent at Winston, fifty dollars we paid. That's what Rocky said we had to. And he said, you all can have it, we'll have wrestling more. And I said, well, Rocky, you toast, but I'm not happy to, you know, put on the counter Thursday Saturday because everybody works on Friday. Well, as of yesterday, he said somebody must come in there at auction. And every time we get started, it's the same thing.
I thought maybe it's because we, we're trying to get the building clean, the floors clean, I thought maybe that was the problem.
No, he said, no, it's the same thing, it's like the second time he's done this like that. We get started real good, bring in, but these are professional wrestlers, these ain't just guys off the street. And they come from a mile old place and they got to book them a month ahead of time. And, and Rocky knows that. He told him the same thing. Yeah, go ahead, Saturday's open, you do whatever you want to do, you know, for auction.
At Thursday Saturday?
For wrestling.
How far you all booked that? I mean, how far do you have these people?
Well, we do it every month. We do it every month.
I, I book, we book them, when we have the show, we start booking right after the show. We start booking for the next month.
But, uh...
Because they're, they're, the, the people really comes from a lot of different places.
How, how many people do you have attending those?
Uh, we mostly have more kids, probably thirty-five, forty, we're just now getting started, you know what I'm saying? We're just now getting really started. But what we're doing, for a reason I started up, I got them up there, because hearts ain't got nothing for the kids to do. That's helping get them off the street, drugs, everything else. And now this is floating in the head, there's enough for hearts, kids for hearts of her to do. They, you know, we had little kids up there handicapped, people start to come. It's a good thing for hearts to have.
We do, we do stuff for handicapped and...
And now, it's all up now, we don't know, we can't get nothing out of Rocky. He, he, you know, can't get nothing out. And everybody telling them, call the board. Well, I've been trying to find, when they have a board meeting. And they won't tell us nothing, won't tell us a thing.
We'll be the whole night and then they'll call.
But I want to tell you about the building. The lights are fired, you can't even see, the lights still, I think it missed some of her. The gym lights are about completely out. The place has been nasty for four months. You don't believe me, you can go find your bank and look. And it ended up killing. It is, it's pitiful.
The way, the way you run up there, you all have to do something or give all our money back on the keys can we, can all work out in there. There's a lot of...
We got, we got some good things happening up there for hearts. And you know, I hate to see it, I hate to see you just all go down the drain.
Also, I'd hate to interrupt you. I'm a seventeen-year veteran on the fire department up there, and the community center, they are fire hazards. It needs to be fixed up there.
We just want to make sure, you know, have people, have stuff in the community for, you know, kids to do and get them off the street and adults.
What is it that needs to be corrected?
There's some, there's, actually, I was a, there's a chip machine up there that they just put that old extension cord on and I was trying to replug and plug it again. I about got that, it's a fire hazard, that, they need a...
Is that what you're referring to?
I don't know what else these are doing, that's why I referred them. But talking about in the basement a while ago, you got lights on down there, which that is an issue too, I mean, for...
Yeah, we've closed it basically.
I know about that.
Yeah, we had to close it a long time.
But our concern is, you know, we're trying to have things up there for the community. You know, it's not, it's not, you know, cause of big or anything like that, we're done for the people. And what we charge is not no big money. I mean, it's not no money, seven dollars, five hundred, a hundred, it's in thirty, you know. I've ever had something like that, have a kid, well, like y'all told me ago, the kids need to be getting off his computers and Xboxes. You know, enjoy it, very enjoy it. So I appreciate wherever we can get done and I'd like to be on the board, to be honest, so we can get some of that done.
Myself included. We've asked them now when they have board meetings, try to join whenever we can get together, they don't.
We don't have that information, but our next meeting, we'll know all that, so...
But what we want to know is, can we go ahead and start booking the third Saturday?
If that board doesn't approve, you can't.
Well, he did, it was already approved. He first, he got a loan back, so he didn't go back.
When we authorize them to operate and run, we're not going overruled.
But once you find out when the board meetings are held and when they hold their elections, you guys can get on that one, you make it. You know, because that's what you need to do, you know, that's what, that's what we need is people involved in the community, getting on the board and giving, you know, a well-rounded view of what's people making.
Right, coming there to work and keep it clean and those kind of things.
Yeah, we, our company then, I'm just a spokesman really for most of it. I don't go out and talk. But I don't look very good at it, but, but, but you got these guys already booked and you got to pay them. Now I gotta, you gotta go back and redo, undo everything.
Yep, and they're going to have to pay money out.
Well, the people got to pay money back out now to pay, give money back to these guys. Because they're already booked.
Well, we'll, we'll check with them and see what the...
And that's, that's where it gets, gets you, you get behind there, then you don't know what to do.
Well, I agree, I mean, it shouldn't be running like a business.
It, it hurts. It hurts, it hurts us. It makes us look bad. It makes the wrestling company look bad then.
Yeah, it makes like a line of people.
And we hate, you know, something like that to come out, but we'll just have to make some calls and we'll call you.
I appreciate y'all's time here.
All right. Anything else? Hearing none, motion to adjourn. All stations, we stand adjourned at ten minutes...